We'll call the meeting to order at six thirty. Entertainer motion to accept the agenda as may be amended. Okay, any, anything that's needed? Okay, just, yeah, Jim's thing is on here for the school, so I don't have anything on the agenda. You guys okay?
All good.
All right, all in favor of the agenda as presented, please say aye.
Aye.
Entertainer motion to accept the minutes of November nineteenth, twenty nineteen, as may be amended.
Go ahead, Chuck.
Okay. So move second.
I didn't find anything when I read them over.
It looked okay to me.
Good with that one.
I'm sorry?
Good with that one.
Okay. All in favor of accepting the minutes of November nineteenth, please say aye.
Aye.
And I have to abstain on this one because I wasn't at the meeting.
Make a motion to approve the December third.
December third. I was not at the meeting, so I can't do the thing.
It was very well-run meeting and it went really quick.
Yeah, I heard it was like thirty more minutes or something like that.
Thirty-two.
Thirty-two? Okay.
I was very disappointed.
You know, when the talker's not around.
Yeah. So, is there anything in there that?
Everything looks good to me.
Okay. Jim, it's your motion.
All approved. All those approved.
Aye.
Okay. Select Board concerns?
Everything is in here.
I, yeah, my stuff is in here as well. Whit, you're it for Citizens tonight.
I'm on my list.
Okay.
It's only us, the cops and the press that will drive in this weather, huh?
The, and Whit made note that he does not have a Facebook account, so we don't have to look for what's going on up-country.
Hey, fine. I do not have any secondary Facebook or Twitter accounts.
Yeah. Okay.
That's good.
Okay.
Did you say you abstained?
I'm sorry?
Did you say you abstained?
I abstained from the December third.
Yeah.
The door moved.
That's just the wind.
Okay. Justice of the Peace nomination?
It's just about.
I'll make a motion to approve, but who are we nominating?
Basically, we have a memorandum to, Sally Bridges resigned her post as a Justice of the Peace for the town.
Right.
It was recommended, and a nomination was recommended for Chuck Hughes to take her spot.
Okay.
So, the town clerk needs a motion to recommend that she forward his name to the state for approval as a Justice of the Peace.
If he not run last time, he was Justice of the Peace.
Yeah, I think he's just coming back. I don't think he ran the last time.
Oh, he didn't, okay. No, because I know he was.
So moved for Chuck Hughes.
Okay.
Do the rest of the stuff we gotta do.
Any other discussion? All those in favor of the nomination of Chuck Hughes for Justice of the Peace, please say aye.
Aye. Now, has Sally moved?
Yes.
She has. You know, I mean, great lady, been here a long time, served and done a lot of different things for the town.
Oh, everywhere.
You know.
And.
Joy Colorado.
Yeah. We, well, she's going to be with at least one of her kids, which is where she should be. The, yeah, we put an item on the agenda so that Jim, who's also on the Modified Union Board, could give us an update on what's going on over there, because we're hearing lots of rumors.
Yeah, so the number one is the budget schedule. We really don't have a budget scheduled right now. The issue that we have is, like in last night's meeting, we're still waiting for FY two thousand and eighteen to be signed off by the auditors, which would, that ended June thirtieth of two thousand and eighteen. And they just started doing the two thousand and nineteen entry for the revenue for two thousand and nineteen. So, we are checking with the state to see if we are capable of moving the March vote to April. Because I don't know, you know, we've done budgets, and how do you do a budget if you don't have your two years ago?
If you're a year and a half behind.
If you're a year and a half behind, knowing where to start from.
Right, you don't have a starting point.
Right. So, so, so that's, 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 you know, the budget schedule. There really is none. We had a resolution last night. I found something in the statutes that spoke about moving the election. I believe it's talking about moving the election. I forwarded it to Chet. I mean, we're underneath the belief that it is to move the election. But it called for the board, the school board, to have a special meeting, or at a town meeting, to move the vote. So obviously, we would have to have it prior to the town meeting in March in order to move the vote. When I forwarded it to the district, I said, please check with council to make sure that I'm reading this right. They had a resolution in front of us last night, and the resolution was just for the board there to change the date, which is not the way I read it. I don't think it's the way you read it either. And, so we approved it based upon that the SU goes to council to verify that we could. So you may be hearing shortly that town school, school budget vote may be moved to April, the first Tuesday in April, so we can have numbers. Now, you worked on the school board for quite a while, and you know, like, the last bunch of years with Act sixty that started up when you were there, we don't get a lot of the numbers until after we actually presented the budget to the town report.
The state notoriously sends us the numbers after the vote.
Well, even af, yeah, but, but we have to have all the paperwork to the towns for the vote by like the third week of January. And then we start getting some other information in mid-February, late February, and even sometimes right after town meeting day, or whatever some people have. So, we're thinking, if we can move the vote to April, it's not just for this year, it would be moving forward, so the school board would have a better idea of where our taxes are and what our budget is.
So they're looking to see if they can, if the board itself can move it without a, without a vote?
Without a vote. Or.
I don't think they can.
I don't think so either, the way reading the statute.
Right.
But, or, have a vote sometime in late January, saying that we move it. And at the same time, if we have to have the vote for the townspeople, Bonard accepted to come into the district. So, January tenth is their thirty-day period that anyone could contest it. So, we would, if we have to have a vote, then we would move it with that also on there. So it would also make the budget easier, because then we would only be putting one budget forward. Because right now, we would have to put a vote, a budget together for Bonard being with us, or Bonard not being with us.
Right.
Because we have to vote as a district to accept them. So if for some reason, we didn't accept them, which would be foolish, because we want the student count, we don't know which budget to go with.
Yeah, and, and just for, from a logistical perspective for the town, typically sometime between the twenty-first and the twenty-eighth of January is when we have to warn our town meeting. So, you would hope that they're able, if they're gonna warn a, a special meeting to move the, the date, that they do that be, then the next week, because you'd wanna have it done before twenty-first, to see if we're even gonna be able to do that. But in the event that the date is moved to April, what that will mean is that the town report and the vote in March will not have any information available as, as it relates to school, we dealing strictly with the town at that point.
And we spoke about that last night, and, you know, they were like, we can give the principal's letter, the board, you know, the chairs, and note, whatever. I think we can still hit like an estimate number in, you know, January of what we're looking at, but we'd rather just have the voters vote on a real strong number. So I think we could put in a, a January, a, a, an estimate in January.
If you had to.
So, if we had to, so then at least you would have the number together.
Okay.
The other conversation that came up last night was, is that to run a special meeting would cost, it, it cost the town about a thousand dollars to run the meeting.
Right.
So some of the conversation was, is does, do, does this, the, the school pick up that fee, or does the town pick up that fee? I left it as, it's really gonna come down to the budgets, because in the end, who ends up paying that thousand dollars? If it's going to put us into a penalty phase or whatever, or the per pupil, whatever, the taxpayers are gonna pay it anyway, because it's in the tax thing. It's, you know, so it's all gonna be depending on how these audits come out. If they don't, I mean, you know what an audit is, right, Chet?
Maybe a little bit.
And, you know, they start making changes, or recommend, not recommendations, but telling you.
What they're gonna do is they're gonna start identifying where money was supposed to go, and if it's in the right line item, and also if, whether it's depreciation or some other expenses need to be reallocated. And it will dramatically, has the potential to dramatically change the, the financial, the financial outlook. So, I think, before you have a real budget, you know, because if you do vote on a budget on time, and, and it's an estimated budget, it could be dramatically different when you get all this information in.
What we're being told out in the open public right now is, is that the current year budget that we're in, somehow the SU Finance Group forgot to put in certain charges like plowing and some other stuff. There's been a big talk about the count of students. How many do we have, how many we don't have? You know, each month it seems to change, and, you know, it's huge with the per, equalized per pupil, you know, and tuition, and how many tuition students, so. So we should have that straightened out by next week, that the actual count. So, so that's that part there. I just want, you know, so, also on this whole Windsor Central District, I mean, the, the board has been meeting, and there's talk of a new building still going on. With the CLA, I believe is going to impact us going down this year, because of houses are selling for, whatever. Even if the tax rate stayed the same, we're gonna see a ten percent increase in the school ta, skate, state tax rate. There's a million dollars already for contractual funds for compensation, salary increases, and the health benefits, a million dollars there. And there's also, I don't know if they have it counted in or not counted in, since Bonard is out, I think Bonard School's like another million that would be added to the budget. And the state just sent us a notification telling us that the equalized pupil spending, without going into penalty phase, which I know the town of Killington, when it was run, the school, I'll mention, we never really wanted to get into that, is eighteen thousand seven hundred and fifty-six dollars. And we have an estimated count from the state right now of eight hundred and fifty-three students. So that means we could run a budget of fifteen million nine, so sixteen million dollars. And that's, that sixteen million, you know, is after all the revenue, the state and everything else. But we were currently at fifteen million dollars for this current year. So just adding the benefits and the compensation puts you at sixteen million. And then, if Bonard's not in there, and then any of the other stuff. The biggest thing in the, the district right now is also, and the board spoke a lot about last night, is, is that this current year, we only put a hundred and fifty thousand dollars into capital for six buildings. And this year's budget, they're talking fifty thousand dollars. So we keep on lowering to take care of.
For six buildings?
For six buildings. The board spoke out last night and said, that's, 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 that has to change. And the recommended number is around a million two to a million four for the six buildings. So you have to put that into the budget also. I mean, we're looking at some really drastic changes if there is nothing done to some other things at the school.
Okay. Well, at this point, we're gonna have to wait and see what they're doing.
Right. And, and the last thing is, is that I, I met up with, I set up an appointment to meet up with our State Representative Jim Harrison this morning at eleven-thirty. I asked Chet to come along. This has nothing to do with the board, it has something to do with me. And, you know, it's just a concern. I mean, we may be seeing dollar ninety to above tax rate. And, you know, what can we do?
Right.
So.
Okay. Well, I'll, I'll say thank you, but.
For the bad news.
Okay. Moving on to Green Mountain National.
We just have the, you know, it's not quite the final numbers for the, for the year. We, not much changed, obviously the revenue didn't change much, but we came in on target with what was predicted in the budget. You will note in your treasurer's report that the one account showed a negative fifty-five thousand dollars.
Right.
And there was eighty thousand in the other. That is because it was during Thanksgiving week, we did the transfer, we had to make a payment on the, the two hundred and fifty thousand dollar loan. And we, we did the, the transaction in our accounting software, but we didn't mail the check. And then the treasurer was away, and they're supposed to do the transfer of the funds between the two accounts. So she transferred the fifty, the sixty thousand dollars after that plus. We did get our reimbursement of about fifteen thousand dollars from the state for a sales tax overpayment a year and a half ago.
Because that was mentioned, that it wasn't there yet.
Yeah, it's there now, and the, it'll show on the December thirty-first one. And the other thing that we did do, as you recall, was maybe two years ago, there was one payment that was made. It was an interest payment on one of the loans of thirty-one thousand that the golf course made.
Right.
At the end of the year, we wanted to do the transfer, the auditor said, he said, if you wanna do that, reissue it. What he did is, the, the golf course has been showing for years that it owes the town two hundred and eighty-six thousand dollars. He wrote the thirty-one thousand dollars off of that, saying that they owed less. And now we've basically given the money back to, to put their cash flow back where it's supposed to be. So they still owe us the same two hundred and eighty-six thousand dollars, but there was a transaction involved with that. So we now put sixty thousand dollars back in their account between all of those pieces. So, we're, we're about the same place we were last year, we'll have thirty or forty thousand, right in early January, we'll do the, and my hope will be that at the January, I think it's the seventh, the next meeting, we'll have the paperwork to do the two hundred and fifty thousand dollar loan again for next year, that we, that we can do. So I think from, from the financials, we're, we're on target, we, the discussion hasn't changed much from last month. And I do have an update on the budget from Brown. Basically, because we were looking to make sure that, that the golf course has a chance to, to show some positive numbers, and we talked about it last time, the town put in enough money for a hundred thousand dollars in capital improvements for the golf course, and the seventy-five thousand for the golf cart payments. And we asked Brown, because they had put that number also into their budget, so it was there twice. So we've removed that from their budget. So, basically, they show in the six-month budget and the eight, and the twelve-month budget, because they're going to the same fiscal year, a twenty-two thousand dollar allocation to capital, so that's forty-four thousand dollars that's included in there that we're supposed to capture, and then also a net profit, for lack of a better word, of sixty-two thousand at the end of the year.
Yep.
So that's about a hundred thousand dollars. And the goal of this is, is we wanna make sure that they make it, that we can make our payments, and that they make that money. And when they do, that means next year we could reduce the capital appropriation from the town, and then we'd be, it could become more self-sufficient, but at least they'd have the cash base in, in the account.
So we have two copies, it's just two copies?
One's six months, one's twelve months, and they didn't label them differently.
Okay, because that's what I'm looking at.
If you look at, if you look at them in the bottom right corner.
Yep.
The, the one has an eighty-four thousand, the other one has a twenty-five thousand.
Okay, twenty-five, alright, because I was reading the header, and they both said.
Yeah, the heading, they never changed the heading, so it was confusing.
So the one of twenty-five thousand on the bottom right.
That's the six month.
That's six months, so that's, that's July one.
That's January one to June thirty.
January one to June thirty.
And then the other one is Ju, July one to June thirtieth the following year. So, that's bas, that's exactly the same budget they presented to us at the, at the meeting in November, with the exception of taking the payments out for the golf course, golf carts. So that we can then come up with a good plan that hopefully, if they achieve these numbers, we're gonna be in a good place and be able to, then it'll become more of a self, a self-sustainable capital budget.
Right.
That's the goal.
Do we need a motion to accept this, or no?
Yeah, I would like a motion, because basically, now that we have their numbers, and if we consider those final, we'll bring that all into NIMRIC and make it a real budget that gets ready to go into the book.
So move. So the motion is to accept the budget or the financials?
The budget, well, we didn't, the financials are.
Are just information.
Yeah, we'll, we'll do the year-end financials, and we'll do a, a vote on that. But I think from this perspective, I just wanna get the budget finalized, so we can put it together in a, in our form.
Okay.
Yeah, motion to approve the Green Mountain National Golf Course eighteen-month budgets put up into two.
Any further questions on this?
I mean, it's just that we're okay with putting the hundred thousand and the seventy-two.
Right, and we're.
Making sure that everybody knows that, and that's, everything else is run the same.
Okay. All those in favor of accepting the budget as presented, please say aye.
Aye.
They will come to us with the hundred thousand dollars worth of, or is it somewhere in here, where they're planning on using that capital?
Yeah, we gotta get the, the actual spending plan in place.
Right.
So we gotta, we gotta get that.
At this point, they just have the money, they don't have where they're gonna use it.
Right, they have to come to us.
Actually, I got a list, I got a preliminary list from Peter, and I just, we gotta go through that whole thing. Because the one, the one little, the fine element which we gotta make sure we plan for is the, the major, the main pump for the irrigation system wet.
Right.
And that's gonna probably be between.
The wet weight?
Yeah, like there, we're having to have it rebuilt for about fifteen grand.
Okay.
So that's one of the big items that, that just came up. We actually just pulled it, we just had to get a crane in to pull it, and it just got sent off, and I just got the proposal.
We were told that it was.
That it was going, well, it's gone.
Well, and I know when the agronomist came in, that was one of the things he wanted to look at.
Right, I just, I got the proposal, and I gotta sign that and, and get that going, but that, that's gonna be a big number.
Are we taking that pump and rebuilding it, or are we getting a different?
Yes, rebuilding that pump, because it's way less than it was to replace.
Are you going down to what's rods down in Rutland?
Forget where, I gotta go look at it again.
Rod's electric in Rutland.
Yeah, I don't know where it was on it, but I have a proposal for it. So, I will, I have not reviewed that at this point.
What does a new pump cost? And if you don't know, then just bring it to us the next meeting.
I will bring it to you next time. I don't remember, but it's.
It's up there.
It's up there.
Especially a pump that size.
Oh, no, I know.
It's gonna be a lot.
Yeah. Okay. In the town, November financials?
Basically, I, and I have it here for anybody who wants to be more bored, I do give you just the summary this time.
We voted on the budget. We don't have to vote on the financials. We'll do that at the end of the year.
All I did for the handout was the summary of the town for, through November.
Mm-hmm.
Because there wasn't, you know, other than printing the fourteen pages, I'll have one here if anybody wants to read more detail. But it is, we're, we're, again, we're on target for where we normally are. We, you know, we have one point three million dollars worth more revenue, but that's because our tax rate was higher and we're raising more funds, so it's really still proportionately correct. And obviously, because we had the, the tax sales, we did recover some more. Interestingly enough, the one property that did not get bid on, I now have two people calling, asking if we would, what, when we'd be putting that back up again. So we will have that conversation shortly. I said if, if they have interest, to please send a letter of interest and a letter of credit, or something that says that they are able to do that before we go spending the money to do it again. And if they do that, I would bring it to the board and see if we wanna re-advertise.
So, would this be a place where, understanding what a tax sale is, and it doesn't get you really much, you get a tax deed, transfer deed?
It takes about three years to get a real one. You get a tax collector's deed.
So, you know, if we have two people interested in the dollar amount that's owed there or whatever, and this thing is just sitting there, is it worthwhile just sending these letters to the person that actually, whoever owns it?
Well, they, it actually, what brought this all up was the owner, I guess, realizing that it didn't get bid on, put it on the market for like eight hundred and twenty-five thousand. And everybody's sitting there going, and then they found out about the tax liens, and they're wondering which way they should go. If they wanna start right away, they should pay the eight twenty-five, and then pay the town however they're doing it, so that's their choice.
So how much is the tax, how much was the tax?
Three forty and change.
Yeah.
Plus, they gotta, they gotta buy back their Alpine Pipeline shares.
Right.
Well, no matter what, they have to do that, even if they pay the eight thousand.
Well, no, they were originally gonna attach it to this, and what they did is they repossessed the shares, so now they're gonna have to spend eighty or ninety grand to get those back.
Okay, I was just, you know.
Yeah, I mean, it's just a, it's just a process issue. The thing that, that would have a huge impact for the town if we were to, if this were to come to fruition, is putting a hundred and eighty thousand dollars back into the reserve fund for this, for the Route Four sewer. That's the biggest benefit.
So, we went through this a year and a half ago, of trying to see if these people that are on this sewer line would form a board, so they would set the rates.
Right.
Not that it would be up to us.
Right, because the initial rate is coming up.
But we didn't.
There's no, there's no.
So, and basically, I've had, I've had Jim Barlow provide a, a conceptual ordinance for the next phase, and once we get through these processes, we'll start reviewing that, because we kinda wanna have that in place by like next summer, as to how we're gonna go forward, because we don't have an ordinance we're operating under right now, so we have to create a new one.
I'm talking more of the.
No, I know.
The pricing and everything, because.
Yeah, well, the, and, and again, the pricing will, will be both, you know, operation and maintenance is operation and maintenance. And then, and then the question's gonna be the reserve fund. The issue is, the reserve fund, when you, because, I wanna say the construction was originally like two point eight or two point nine million, when they built it, that three to six percent is what should have been going in there, and we're gonna have to get to that level at some point where we start putting, and we're just gonna, I think, come up with a, a formula that says this is how we're gonna determine what we need to have.
All I'm getting at is, is that we tried making it as a board to go with people that are on the actual sewer line, to form a board, to come up with their numbers.
And they didn't.
And they didn't, so now we have to really step in on it.
So, that's all I have, and then in our treasurer's report.
They'll turn up once we put out a number.
Yeah.
On the treasurer's report, we're still showing the money that's in the restricted funds for the, the two big, major projects that were approved by the town. I, on last Friday, we made the application for both the, the road, well, it's three of them actually, the road construction, the Irene Bridge reconstruction, which is the five hundred and eighty-eight thousand, and the, the Public Safety Building. So those all went in on Friday. We're supposed to hear in January or February, but I think we're, we're all set, because I've already gotten comment back and are just asking for a copy of the golf audit, so I don't think we have any other major questions. Then the only other question that they asked, which is, I told her on the phone, but I'm gonna put it in writing, is the intent of the town to refinance the balloon payment for the golf course.
That's at twenty-one.
That's the, the budget we're working on now, it's in that, so we'd be doing the refinances part of that.
There's like, what, a million four minus?
Minus two seventeen.
Minus two seventeen, okay.
It's a million four fifty-six minus two seventeen, is what it is.
So when I look at this treasurer's report, and in case anyone else looks at it outside of us here, can you just go through it, Chet? We're showing a balance on November thirtieth of seven million dollars, and then the notes that are underneath, five millions in restricted funds. That five million dollars in restricted funds carries the Public Safety Building loan that we actually got and everything else. All those funds are there. Then, the, the last item is the four million, seven thirty-three, and that's for the state of Vermont.
On June first.
On June first, but we have a payment coming in.
Yeah, we have a payment in February that comes in before that.
So, so, and then, the other two items in there, when it says not included in restricted funds, why are they not included in restricted funds?
What are you talking about?
Note.
It's note. It's included.
Oh, no, okay, I'm sorry, I didn't see the E.
[laughing]
I was like, it's a note, anticipation note included in a restricted fund. So, what?
A lot of people come into Town Hall requesting use of-
Readers.
Readers.
Yeah.
So we're considering buying, we're considering buying one of those ones that has like eyelashes or something in that they have to wear if they want to use them in Town Hall.
That's like, not included, I mean, it's, maybe that's why she has it on the line, so we just read those four words.
Mm-hmm.
[laughing] Yeah, I can admit I'm wrong.
Okay.
Thank you. Do you need a motion to approve the treasurer's report?
Yes, please, and, you know, I don't have, and as far as the restricted funds, everything is still on target, and I don't see any major issues, and I just want to point out, given our conversations related to the school, we have a state reappraisal grant fund still in place for $252,000 in the event that the CLA comes into the point where they require us to start doing a reappraisal, so.
What does it cost us to do a reappraisal on the town, I think?
When we did the research last month, looking at what the last one cost us, it was around $190,000 to do that one with, it was used, I think we had one contractor hired out, plus the additional lister time.
So, if we go down to 90% CLA, which is being probably kind of nice, if we only get down to 90%, what it actually does is raise you your value, that the state taxes you that extra 10%.
Right.
Town doesn't get anything, but if we do the reappraisal-
Does the state tax kick in at 90 or 89?
It kicks in at everything, even like, we went from 103 down to, they, so like last year, the tax rate was $1.60, but the CLA, we went from 103 down to 99.8 or something.
Right.
That move moved us to $1.62 from the state, $1.59 or whatever.
Right.
So whatever the CLA, so if they set the rate, and if you're at 100%, then you're at that rate.
Right.
If you're at 110%, then that rate comes down 10%. If you're at 90%, that rate goes up 10%.
The issue becomes, and I can't remember the trigger off the top of my head, but somewhere between like 90 and 92%, if we get down that low, we'll say you are required to do a reappraisal. Somewhere in that neighborhood.
Right.
There's a trigger that says you have to.
Yeah, the last time, we pushed it always to 68%.
So I don't remember what the number is, but there is a place there, it's an automatic trigger.
I think it's 80%, once you fall below 80%.
It might be, it might be 80.
And then the coefficient number is another number that-
The coefficient is the bigger concern, because we were 117 of the 120.
Right.
So if we, if we triggered, that might, I think that's the one that's gonna kick first.
But if we, if we do a townwide reappraisal, and it is, then every house, you know, whatever, we'll get the people coming in, the last time the grand list went down because the reappraisal, okay?
That just means the rate goes up.
You know, so now, we're looking at houses selling more, so the tax rate will, the grand list will go up, which will lower, or if we keep the tax rate the same at the town side, would raise more money to do whatever, but, I mean, it's really, we're gonna have a rough one here with the CLA.
Mm-hmm.
So, we have a motion to accept the treasurer's report.
Okay, any further discussion? All in favor of accepting the treasurer's report of November 30th, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. And, your budget review?
Okay, so basically, I've done just some minor adjustments to the budget we've reviewed, and they revolve around, I took out the second, the double painting of the lines, we did add, we did a couple of corrections, one at the police chief's salary line item, and the other correction was also a reshift, and a correction was the equipment replacement. When I had done the original, we put the sustainable number in there, but we did have a one-year boost on the equipment replacement number this year, because this is the first year we're gonna have to buy a truck that we're not gonna do any financing for, so it was a one-year catch-up to do that, so we did a little bit of shifting with the numbers and other capital line items that weren't as critical at this time, the same way we did last year, you know, we moved a couple things around. But, we end up basically at the same place in the predicted amount for capital, and I think we're in a good place, but this will go a long way, because actually, as part of doing the bond applications, you know, looking at where we put in our actual debt that we have today, it was very nice to note that from the town side, you know, 80% of the debt we have now is gonna be done by 2022. All we gotta do is refinance the golf, and the other two or three items were basically done, you know, in 2025, so the only thing going out beyond there is the two we just, the two we just approved and are working, so I think we're in a good place where we're staying with replacing our capital expenditures, you know, our debt funding, and not increasing the amount, and still getting our infrastructure and our facilities up to speed. So I was real happy with that. With all of these adjustments, and looking at the current tax rate proposed, when I did the math that we have today, including bumping up the interest payment for the 1.558, $588 million bond, which was the road and the bridges, and also some interest payment on the Public Safety Building, because we shifted it up a year, the proposed rate that comes out is .4925. The rate that was on the papers last year that was predicted was .49-
52. So .42 what?
4925.
4925.
And what was predicted was 4952, so we're like .26 lower than we predicted. So, I mean, it's in line, and, you know, unless we want to make any adjustments to the budget, as far as I can tell, with the exception of, and the only thing that I would say may, I mean, and I say may minorly adjust this process is, is if the bonds get approved kind of in January, right at the beginning of February, and if I'm getting the actual interest rate we're gonna see, and we know what the payments are gonna be, I can put actuals in here, this is estimated for those two new bonds, so we could get a little closer, but right now, I think we're on target where we planned to be.
But those bonds shouldn't be a significant change to-
No, it's gonna, it won't make really hardly any difference in the rate itself, it just-
What was, the tax rate this current year is like, what, .4?
65.
.46.
Less than three cents. But this is also what we talked about last year at the-
Oh, no, I know.
Meeting.
Yeah, it was, it was two, two years ago.
We're on target.
Right.
I was happy we're on target. And the fiscal year we ended, that I just got the draft audit for, shows an increase in our fund balances, and then the completion of improving that fund balance will be when we get the $588,000 for the bridge reconstruction, we will be able to now write off the number we've been carrying around $300,000 in Irene debt still.
Right.
So we'll be able to physically write that off, and our cash will be at a place where we no longer have to borrow short-term money to get through the summer. I think those are all key pieces.
So how much will we have then, and, you know, the one thing I've been pushing for years is that we need to build up our reserves, so how much do we plan on having in the-
I hope to have somewhere in between $800,000 and $900,000.
By?
By June 30th.
Of this, okay. So we had zero in there?
Yeah, we basically had like $96,000.
Zero in there.
[laughing]
Yeah, a little over a year ago.
So, for this extra three cents or whatever, we're checking our, we're making our account balance $800,000, $900,000 stronger?
The other thing it's gonna do is, it's gonna virtually eliminate the need to borrow these million-dollar gap loans.
Oh, yeah, no.
That have been borrowed in the past.
Right, and then when we get to a certain amount, what is the, what is the recommended amount that we have in here?
They say recommended.
The auditor, the auditor would give us?
Recommended amount?
Three months minimum?
Well, the goal is, is three months, which would, in this case, be about 1.2 million.
Okay, so we should be able to in the third year of doing this cycle?
Well, the goal is, is when we start looking at what our annual carryover, I'm still carrying over the $120,000 like we did last year, so we'll build up a little bit.
Right.
If we can continue to do that, where maybe we're gonna have $180,000 or $200,000, we can build up $80,000 or $90,000 a year, and if we can go, you know, if we have a, shouldn't say this, if we have a year where we don't have to buy as much salt or sand, you know, things like that will help bolster the balance.
Save up in the balance.
Exactly.
Okay.
Sorry about that.
That's a good news, bad news thing.
Exactly.
I just want to, you know, I mean, we are moving ahead, it's financially getting better, we came out with these numbers, and it's, you know-
And it, and we didn't expect to do it in one fell swoop.
Right.
It was moving in that direction, is what we planned, and that's where we are.
Right. So.
And, so that's all I have for that, and basically, I'm asking for, you know, whether you want to do it today or another time, is do we say we're, this is the budget we're gonna have a conversation with, unless, you know, we can always make a modification all the way up till we warrant it in the 21st, but basically, I'm gonna put this in as a, as a, you know, we're approving the final draft, basically.
I would say give us all of the stuff at the next, you know, or get to us all the different departments, because we don't have, normally we'd get each department, whatever, like we've been doing, and then to, you know, and then-
Well, I mean, it's in this budget, if you want, but-
You know, but just have it so that we're voting on to, in the minutes that we're voting on the budget, as is, or whatever.
Okay, that's fine.
I mean, you know, it's kind, it's kind of weird, I don't have anything against this budget, but we really haven't, you know, talked about anything, you know, as far as personnel or anything, you know, just, there's other things that we have to do, so we need to go into. Nothing, I don't think anything's gonna change, but-
I'm saying, but right now, we have consensus, and this is, this is the direction we're going in.
Yeah.
That's fine.
Goes back to measure twice, cut once.
Right.
Yeah, so we'll discuss it one more time, a little more thoroughly.
Discuss it one more time, and, you know, and I mean, I-
Is there any, is there any backup information you need or want at this point to go through with this?
I think I asked you this before, do we have a schedule for replacement of vehicles and such, now that we're starting to buy instead of lease?
Yes, it's actually, if you actually look in last year's book, it shows it.
Okay, you don't have to pull it out, I'm just, I just want to make sure that we have it.
Yeah, we do have it.
Yeah, okay.
And that's, and I, what I haven't done, and I didn't want to do until I got to this point, especially with capital, I have to go through and apply all of the projects we're in there, and then shuffle, I just got all my estimated paving project numbers, and I gotta go in and set everything, so more than the operations budget, the capital budget is critical, because if I go, I get, then I gotta redo my whole spreadsheet, you know what I mean, when I go do that, so I'm trying to get the totals right, and then we can talk about where we're gonna put the money, and you would have that at the next meeting, to look at, you know, here's the paving projects we're planning, and here's the trucks we're buying, and all of those things.
Okay. Anything else on this? We're good for now?
Okay, so I will, I will use this as the basis for the rest of the stuff.
Yeah, just, you know, here we are, it's out, instead of us voting it today on a snowy day, you put it out there, this, we don't have anything else to move forward.
What if it's the snow had to do with it?
Look at the crowd, we don't have it.
[laughing]
It's in the press.
Okay. Managers' report.
Just, you know, just so you're aware, in the town garage, both the boilers are the type that have the aluminum interiors, and they have corroded to the point where we have to replace the boilers. So I have two different proposals based on the style and the efficiency levels, and I'm probably gonna go with the cheaper one, and I don't know if I can do, I gotta go back and look at my numbers, if I can do both of them this year, but I'm gonna do at least one, and that'll be about six grand. So it's just a FYI that we do have to replace both boilers in the garage and get that up to date.
Those old propane wall mount things?
They're, well, they're not wall mount, but they're the well-maclean verticals that are, that have now failed, so we're gonna be, moving forward, we're replacing them, and we also had a failure, a complete failure of the heater in the golf maintenance building, so that's being replaced, that it cost about $4,200, also for the capital item, so, just so you're aware. So, the other item was-
How do we, how do we put that out for a quote? Do we hit up more than one plumber?
Well, we hit, we had Seabee Oil who went out there and did it, and then we got Paquette also, who's been doing most of the town's work, and Paquette's price was good, and we're gonna go with that one. Public Safety Building update, just so everybody's aware, we have basically completed pouring foundations, they're putting in the temporary heat in the ground, it'll be a temporary radiant heat to keep the ground warm. The intention in the first two weeks of January is for structural steel to begin. Immediately upon completion, that, they'll be doing roofing and getting it closed in, and then we'll be moving in to go in to do the floors and things of that nature. Right now, the project, while we lost about a month to ledge removal, we've lost, we're a couple of weeks behind where we had planned to be, but the completion date is still the same, we've been able to fold a little bit in the schedule, so we're still looking right now at a July 31 completion date. Yeah, I think basically, through the, and we did do the evaluation of was it better to stop for three months or to continue, and the costs were actually greater for stopping and paying the additional monies for the different equipment than it was to just have the winter conditions and heat and things like that do it, so we decided to just get right through and get the project done as quickly as possible. It is going, other than the ledge, it's going right according to plan, the thing is going really well, don't anticipate any change orders, I'm still waiting for the final ledge numbers, that'll hit our contingency a little bit, but we're still not over budget, and we haven't got, we're not close to hitting going over the budget, it's just a matter of how much contingency do we use up. And we are, there are going to be no planned changes to the building to create change orders and things of that nature, so the only thing is unexpected items, so I think we're gonna be just fine. We will be like very close, but we're gonna pretty much hit the number we, what we expected in the beginning.
Okay.
That's all I want to hear. I mean, it's not us now, it's, we got a vote approved by the voters for a bond, and, you know, just come in and budget, build what we said we were gonna build for the price we set. Contingency is contingency because of those things.
Yeah.
Sticking up instead of going in the ground.
We look like the K-1.
Yeah.